Thank you very much. Good evening. Thank you for the introduction. Just a couple of words before we get started. About the format. All right. Here's how we're going to proceed. The candidates have drawn lots for the Order of Precedents, and they are seated in the order in which they will proceed. The same question will be addressed to all five candidates, and they will take turns answering first. Each candidate has 90 seconds to answer each question. The questions have been compiled by the PTA Council from questions that were forwarded by the various PTAs, and the candidates have not seen the questions. League volunteers are timing the candidates, and they will raise a yellow card when the candidates have 30 seconds remaining out of their 90, and then a red card to indicate that time has elapsed. Candidates will then have 10 additional seconds to finish their sentence. The public is respectfully asked to refrain from applause during the forum as it takes time away from the presentations. Now, I'd like to introduce the candidates in the order in which they are seated. To my first left is Karen Kowalski. Next to her is Gaetan Francis. Next is Christina Downey, followed by Karen Hirsch, and Joe Kelly last, but not least. At this point, I think we're ready to begin. May I ask everybody to turn off their electronics so that we don't have any dingings while we're talking? Are the timers ready? Candidates ready? Here's the first question, which will go to Ms. Kowalski. What do you see as the major issues facing the Greenwich Public School District?
I was asking, I was thinking there'd be a longer question. I was ready to take notes. So I think there are a host of major issues that I think the Greenwich Public School system faces at the moment. But the first and most important that is on my agenda is the overall achievement of our students. Over the last several years, the achievement has been stagnant, and that is a concern of mine, given the fact that Greenwich spends the most money per pupil and has the highest-paid teachers in all of Connecticut. The new numbers have recently come out, and we don't seem to be hitting our mark year over year. This is not a Western versus Eastern Greenwich component. This is an overall Greenwich schools issue. I think that there are underperforming students in each of our schools that need to be addressed. I think the board has to take seriously its mandate, which is to look and dive into where students need assistance and help. I think that one of this, I think the achievement needs to be a major agenda item. We need to dig in. We need to figure out how the school system can spend effectively and efficiently to make sure that the students are getting the resources they need in order to make the achievements that we should be offering them as their parents and as a community.
Thank you very much. Ms. Francis, you're next.
Thank you. First, thank you for those who came out here. We've got a lot of competition tonight between the Yankees and the Democratic debate tonight. So I think, you know, everybody's up here for student achievement. Clearly, that's why we're here. Student success, student well-being are key factors. I think, you know, one of the big pieces and one of the reasons I decided to run again was, I think, to support our new superintendent. Keeping a superintendent, building a strong relationship with a superintendent is a very important piece of, I think, getting to that student success. I think the other thing, which is, maybe it doesn't seem so exciting, but I think another piece of what I'd like to focus on, which I don't know if I'd call it an issue, but it's thinking about board efficiency. How are we effective in creating a strategic plan? How do we create good goals that we can follow? How do we work cooperatively with administrators? And I think the other big piece is the town. You know, I think there's a lot of different groups of people that we have to interact with, and how do we do that in an effective way to keep us moving forward in any project or undertaking? I think a big one of those is the digital learning piece. And I think, you know, I mean, before the digital learning, one-to-one devices came out, I had mixed feelings about it. I think there's some really great potentials with it. But I think, you know, as we're hearing more and more parents talk about it, it's not to overuse the devices. And I think it's figuring out how to create that balance, how to measure what we're doing, how to make sure that what we're doing is successful. So I think that's a big piece for us moving forward. We've certainly heard a lot about special education, and budget is always important.
Thank you very much. Ms. Downey, you're next.
Okay. I think achievement is something we have to focus on continually. It's a major issue, but it's a perennial issue. So while that is an issue, I think there are some certain more burning, immediate issues. I think, like Gaetan said, I think in supporting our new superintendent and giving her the tools she needs to manage our district effectively with the board oversight, we would like to really encourage that. But of particular interest, I think we really need to focus on the master facilities plan. I think this is a really crucial moment in time that I'm sure there's probably a question about later on. So I won't go into a lot of detail now. But we need, with the 15-year capital plan, we now have the blueprint for going forward to make our schools truly excellent facilities as well as the education going on inside. And I, as an RTM member, I've seen this process. I'll speak more to that later. But I want that to be a focus of the board. In addition to that, there clearly, from coming to some recent Board of Ed meetings, the special education, there are issues with that that I think need to be a priority as well.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hirsch.
Hi. For those who don't know me, I am Karen Hirsch. And for my role as past president of the PTA Council, I have a lot of understanding of what parents in our town find as concerns with our Greenwich Public Schools personally. I know, much like the rest of the candidates, achievement is something that we all tend to focus on here. It is the mission of our Greenwich Public Schools. But beyond that, communication. I have a background in communications. And to me, I think half of the issues that we find in our town are simply a matter of a lack of communication. If we don't explain the incredible decisions and discussions that are happening at the board meetings and why these decisions were made, we often let other people tell those stories for us. And with that type of confusion, it tends to sort of lead to work concerns in town than necessarily need be. I think special education has been a concern in this town for quite some time. I know I've been advocating for changes in that department for quite a few years. And our facilities, yes. The master facility plan was something that was asked for by the BET so that we could plan our budget appropriately. We need our town facilities to be ADA compliant and accessible to everyone who tends to use them. And we certainly need to focus on our program reviews for technology, special education, and more with the upcoming renewal of our strategic plan.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for having me here tonight. Thank you, everyone, for attending. This is very nice of you guys to come and just do this. The question on the most important thing in the school was well touched on by everyone who spoke before me. There are a lot of very important issues, but my experience, I have to apply my experience to what I'm looking into getting involved in. And it's basically a 25-year Wall Street career. First part of it was on the production side. Second part was on the management side. And management is so important to create production in business. I have also bought some small struggling companies. And with those small struggling companies, I applied management to it. One thing I do identify, the revolving door superintendents, which we've had over the last number of years, you can't run a proper, structured organization with revolving door of CEOs, superintendents, management. So it's key for us to make sure we understand the superintendent's been picked. I met her twice. I don't really know her, but she sounds really good. And I trust that those who have chosen her made a good decision with that. So helping her, supporting her. It's a tough task having eight, I guess, bosses. The Board of Ed is eight people who will be telling the superintendent how she has to conduct her business. But basically, to support her in any way we can, the best way we can, I think that's the most important issue to progress on the other topics we talked about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just an administrative question. Can you see the signs that tell you how much time you have left?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Because I'm finding it a little difficult. All right. The second question will go to Ms. Francis first. Is the current five-year strategic plan on track to achieve its goals? And what should be the components and success criteria? What should the components and success criteria be of the next strategic plan? And I'll be happy to repeat if anybody needs me to.
Five-year strategic plan. So five-year strategic plan. I think for a number of the elements of that, we call them tiles, the goals of that, we are not going to hit them. I wish I could say we were. I think it's a combination of some of them being very ambitious. I think some of it is not having had a superintendent consistently here, and so some of the direction changes over time. And so I think, you know, a big part of what we've been talking about, and I'm on the new ad hoc committee for strategic plan, is how do we organize ourselves well this year to really evaluate that, understand sort of as best we can what has worked, what is not? Really, I think, focus on how do you create a really good strategic plan? And then think about what the next steps are. You know, I haven't actually spent nearly as much time thinking about what are the specific components that I want to be in there. I think that's, to me, a lot of a group discussion about how you get there. Clearly, student achievement is a big piece of that. I think there's going to be a discussion about the personalized learning is a piece of that. I believe we have invested and believe in the social-emotional learning of our students. I would think that that would be a big piece of it. So I think the major components will stay the same, if it were up to me. But I think there needs to be discussion as a group. And I think the plan is that, once we have our new board seated, that's going to be a big part of it. And if I'm still there, I will engage in that. And I think that's what's going to be important for this year.
Thank you very much. Ms. Downey.
And I forgot to mention on the last one to thank, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and PTA Council for putting on the forum tonight. I know it's a good opportunity for voters. The strategic plan, this is our first real strategic plan. And it's been done during a period of turnover with superintendents. So it's a great concept and a great roadmap for the district. But I think it's going to take a little time to evolve for us to know what the right criteria are and the right components. So we're all learning together. It's not an ideal, but we're moving in a positive direction. I agree with Gaetan that we need to be, perhaps we haven't gotten to all the places we need to be, but a variety of components need to be looked at. Academic, social-emotional learning on a variety of levels for every student. And there are many different elements to it. And I've sat on some meetings where they've been discussing it. And the new board will be focusing on a new strategic plan. There's a workshop already scheduled to start discussing what are the elements of it. So I look forward to being involved in looking at all the data to make those decisions.
Thank you. Ms. Hirsch.
Well, if you're talking about the strategic plan, I know we've taken a look at it quite often. And we're in the fourth year. They're taking the time now, as the fifth year is rolling in, to sort of take a look at what we do need to do. It has the great bones, like Gaetan was saying. It's got the right tiles, the right pieces, focusing on components of achievement, social-emotional learning, homeschool connection, communication with families, and beyond. But the problem is, we really have not focused much on building in science-sensitive and actionable goals. That's where the current strategic plan has fallen flat. Plain and simple, without having time-sensitive yearly check-in and goals. And we don't have the ability to say, if we've missed those goals, what happens next? So the plan has wonderful bones. And I think, once we start to reach out to the community and see what topics they feel need to be addressed, we'll have a much better idea of what those components need to be going forward and what goals we specifically need to hit. Obviously, we need to focus on student achievement, and that's everything that we do as a board and as a town for our students. But ultimately, without the data and without check-in points, I think our strategic plan falls flat.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kelly.
Well, I like to think of myself as a new set of eyes on our planning structure, our strategic plan. I've had three children go through grammar school, middle school, and high school. They're now in the working world. And what they've learned in the schools and the success they've had through the schools, they, all three of them, are quite successful right now in their endeavors. I have a freshman in high school right now who has also gone through the grammar school and middle school. So the perspective I have from a parent will be helpful in looking at a strategic plan going forward. I also have worked at the high school for the last 10 years as a coach, rubbing elbows with the teachers, sharing discussions about their view on things that are important within the school in ways that they could be better motivated. So with a strategic plan, with a strategic plan going forward, I have little knowledge of the past strategic plan. I was not involved in it. I had no input in it. I didn't study it. I do think that the strategic plan going forward with my skill set and my experience will certainly help put one together that will be achievable. And hopefully, I'll be able to help achieve the goals which we put forward to achieve. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kowalski.
Sorry about the microphone.
No problem. So I will remember to thank everyone, because I forgot before. Thank everyone for coming out tonight and obviously for the League of Women Voters for hosting us here. So my understanding of the five-year strategic plan is that, unfortunately, as Gaetan had said, we've missed the mark on the goals that have been set. I think what we need to do is have a deep dive. We need to look at the action plan as it was put in place, understand what goals that we missed, why we missed them. And when we start planning for the next plan, I do think it is a collaborative effort. We need to take in data points from not only the fact that many of us are parents and have students in these schools, but also from the community and the parents of you out there to understand what are our goals, and then coming up with an action plan. Goals are great, but the question is, how are we going to achieve them? What money should we put behind them? How do we allocate that money? What is the substance? And put together a substantive action plan with committees that are tasked with making sure that we achieve those goals. I agree with Karen completely. We need to have a check-in time period. We need to see if we're on track. This is how organizations work in the business place. If you're not meeting a goal, you have to understand why, break it down, and figure out how to get back on target. And I think that's what we need to do here going forward for our students, to make sure we don't have any slippage. And that's going to be important to achieve any goals that we set in place.
Thank you very much. The next question goes to Ms. Downey, and it's a long one. The achievement gap is a persistent issue in Greenwich. Has the strategic plan had a positive impact on reducing the achievement gap? Going forward, what are your academic priorities, with particular attention to closing the achievement gap while also raising academic achievement for all students? Could you say it again, please?
Yes.
Achievement, the achievement gap is a persistent issue in Greenwich. Has the strategic plan had a positive impact on reducing the achievement gap? Going forward, what are your academic priorities, with particular attention to closing the achievement gap while also raising academic achievement for all students?
Wow. Got a mouthful there.
No. I will repeat if necessary.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I think we've all taken our notes. The achievement gap has been persistent in town, and it's been something we've been talking about for years. And I think we've tried a number of methods, and we have not been successful in doing it. So I think we need to look at different strategies in order to do so. I think we want to, one element to consider in terms of an academic priority would be to really consider our pre-K program. To the extent the budget allows, perhaps it needs to be expanded. You know, there are many studies that show that the gap exists when the children arrive in kindergarten. And the only way to do anything to derail that is to start taking action before they get to kindergarten. So to the extent the budget and the town was willing, that would, to me, be an academic priority to doing so. The other thing is, we need to look at how personalized learning has had an impact on it. I think there's been some success. And we need to look at the tools that the teachers have used successfully on the students, where it's worked, and start translating that to other staff members so that they have the tools to help.
Thank you. Ms. Hirsch.
Much like Christina said, I think pre-K is certainly an important avenue in helping to reduce the achievement gap. But ultimately, the bigger issue is that students need to learn more than a year's worth of content in a year to reduce the gap. One of the biggest things that can be done is to have parent support education at home. It's been said time and time again in countless research studies that that's one of the main factors in reducing the achievement gap. And for us to basically support continuous, rigorous academic programs for every single student with different learning styles and different abilities, we have to find multiple ways of evaluating what our students need. Are we using the correct assessments? It's part of the strategic plan, and we have been looking at those assessment tools to see if they are the right places to find the gaps that our students are having before they reach mastery in a subject. But ultimately, one of the other ways that we can help to reduce the achievement gap is something that I know we've been working on with social-emotional learning, is making sure that every student has a connection with an adult in their school building. Someone who can be there to support them academically and socially, emotionally. Because that is really what happens now, to help engage students in their learning and their interests, is to have a connection.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly.
I have a personal experience I'd like to share with everyone here where we had an education gap in my household when I grew up. There were six of us, six kids in our family. Three of the kids in the family could barely read because of, well, we were called, the kids were called dumb back when we were younger, and were put in the lesser group and kind of ignored. The other three were top students. They went on to go to schooling after college, and they did very well for themselves. And afterwards, once the school got, we were finished with the school, even the ones who could not read very well, the ones that were the lesser students in school, they did well as well. I took in recently a child who needed a home for a few months. And that child had some disabilities, and learning disabilities. And I had to sit in some meetings with the counselors for those people and just experiencing the difference between years ago, when my family had to go through the situation where we got ignored and called dumb, and where we are in school right now with addressing these issues. It's just, it's incredible how far we've come. So if we can continue on the progress of being able to work with our kids who are not good readers, our kids who don't learn the same way other kids learn. And I think if we continue to encourage the ones to excel in, one of our children was a very good student. The other two were average. And we've got one that is, we still get to decide whether she's good or average, but we certainly hope the best for her. But the way the school is progressing is something that, with my personal experience, is a positive move.
Thank you very much. And now, Ms. Kowalski.
Thank you. So I think we all are in agreement on the panel tonight that there is an achievement gap problem in Greenwich. And I think it's persisted, as I mentioned earlier, in every school. We need to close that gap. How are we going to close that gap? Well, I think we need to take, we need to figure out what is working for some students and keep doing it. We need to figure out what's not working and stop doing it. And we need to figure out what our kids need from an individualized learning perspective. I have three children. They all learn differently. And my husband and I have had to figure out how each of them learn and help them. And what does that mean for the schools? It means we need to make sure that parents are involved, that there's a communication between those teachers at home so that what's being done in school is also being reinforced at home. Because I don't think that the six-hour school day is going to catch all of the kids up. There are 24 hours in a day. And we need to figure out how to help the parents maximize what's being learned at school in order to move forward and progress to achieve that gap. So I think, in substance, it is really two issues. It's one, building parent support at home to help achieve that gap, to diminish the gap, and also assessing students early and often to make sure they're getting the right tools that they need from the very beginning. This is not something we should assess in fifth grade for an ongoing problem. We should start young with intervention and work with those students from the very beginning to make sure that they are getting the academic support that they need from the moment they enter our schools.
Thank you very much. Ms. Francis.
So this time, I'm going to remember to say thank you to the League of Women Voters and the PTA Council for hosting this and getting us our questions and setting this up and advertising it. The first thing I'd like to do is actually give the Greenwich Public Schools, I think, a little bit of a pat on the back. There is no doubt that an achievement gap persists. But if you look at our high-need students, they are often comparing to regular students in other school districts. So we overall, I think, can do really well in thanking our schools. If we look at Western Middle School, there's been amazing work that's been done there. My kids went there, so I'm a little rah-rah for Western. But, you know, we've done a lot of great things with our high-need students, and I think there is a lot of support that goes out to them and a lot of work that does that. We happen to also be a town that has amazing excellence. You know, we have more science winners than Bronx Science, you know, than going to some of these Intel competitions. So in some ways, our achievement gap is there because we have such excellence as well. That doesn't mean that we don't keep working on it. That doesn't mean that we don't want every child to reach their absolute potential. And I think that there's a number of things to do with that. Pre-K is obviously an issue. But even before that, you know, I'm going to have very happy, you know, through my representation on the Alliance, with them, with United Way, on work that's really starting almost immediately with birth, and I think even sometimes with the parents before that. Brunswick doing summer work with our students. And I think, you know, when we talk about pre-K, it's often after-school work, it's summer school, as well as engaging parents to extend the day. So there's a lot of different tactics, I think, to help that. And we need to keep looking at it. And again, what works and what doesn't.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, the next question, we'll go to Ms. Hirsch first. Given it is the foundation of the current strategic plan, describe your view of what personalized learning is, specifically addressing the role of teachers and of technology in making learning personal. Shall I read it again? Sure. Okay. Given it is the foundation of the current strategic plan, describe your view of what personalized learning is, specifically addressing the role of teachers and of technology in making learning personal.
Well, a lot has been said in town about personalized learning, or as they're calling it now, making learning personal. We have students that have every level of understanding at every subject, and so to have personalized learning, my view of it is, we're not doing it the way it necessarily was intended, but it's an opportunity to give every student a deeper dive into subjects that they want to learn a little bit more about. Technology has become an integral part of our classroom. It's arguably the biggest change in teaching that we may see in our lifetime. But we really don't have a good sense of how our students are utilizing these devices consistently across the district. I know we need to sort of address that and see how our students are using the devices and if they are actually meeting the academic goals that were set for them when it comes to personalized learning and more. It should never take the role of a teacher away. Education and technology and personalized learning is simply a tool, a tool for our students to be able to access curriculum in different ways, but the student-teacher connection is really what drives academic achievement. And it's something I know that we really need to focus on when we are looking forward into the strategic plan and the tools we're looking to deliver our curriculum going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Personalized learning. Well, I'll tell you though, I could think back when I was younger. It's amazing to think that within our pocket, we have the information we have to answer any question we could possibly ask. How exciting that is to have access to all the information in the world, how exciting it is in the field of education to be able to tie in all the kids to these devices, which they are many times addicted to. So it's wondering, are we having them look at these personal devices too much? We're not having them look at them enough? We're not utilizing them properly? We're not teaching them how to use them right? There's so many questions, and it has to be looked at so intensely. Personalized learning, as far as my experience with coaching at the high school, no kid is the same. Every kid is different. Every kid needs different motivation. Every kid needs to be encouraged in a different way. Kids play differently, they respond differently to instructions. It's really important, and we maximize the team's effort when we do work with the team, looking at each kid individually, not trying to coach them the same way, not encourage them to play the game the same way, to find out what motivates them and pushes their buttons. If you figure that out, if you spend the time to put the extra work in to figure that stuff out, then you have a better team. I assume the same thing will apply to personalized learning when it comes to students in our high school. All right, our schools.
Thank you. Ms. Kowalski?
Wants to get the microphone? Yeah. Personalized learning, I think, has a number of different meanings. I think the key focus for personalized learning is to give credit to the teachers that are in our schools. I think our teachers spend an enormous amount of time getting to learn our kids' individual needs, their learning styles, their wants, their desires, what motivates them. And I think we need to give credit and help support our teachers in learning about our kids, so that our teachers can help address what the needs are of our children. I know that they have utilized different resources between the digital learning and just the old-school learning that we're all used to in this auditorium. I think that with the assistance between teachers and parents and letting the teachers get to know our kids, that they can continue to figure out how best to help our kids learn. And I think we need to encourage that with our teachers and look to the resources that we can provide them, whether it be with the iPads that they're learning with, and also providing some detail about our own kits at the beginning of the year. But I think that the teachers here in Greenwich are doing a good job of learning our kids' and their style of how they like to be educated, and I think they're doing a great job.
Thank you. Ms. Francis?
So personalized learning is the strategy that the administration and the schools took on to try and achieve the goals that were set up in the strategic plan. It is a method to try and get to those goals. I happen to think it's a great method if done well, and I think it's one we should continue to support. I think the main components to me are, you know, engaging students because their own interests, their own values, their own perspectives are taken into account in how they learn, their methods of learning are taken into account. I think it's critical in terms of mastery-based learning, which I think is really key, and what it means is that before you move to the next step, you understand the one you've got. You're building a good, Alkon did a great TED Talk on this, you know, you've got a great foundation before you try to go to that next step. You wouldn't build a house on top of a 60% foundation, you want it completely set. So it's making sure that kids have the tools they need for that next step, and that when they've got it, they're moving on because they're ready for that. I think that's a very important component as well. I think, you know, another interesting component that's come up in a lot of the literature is sort of a self-directed goal. So it's engaging the student in setting their own goals, which will often, I think, make them more successful in reaching those goals. So I think there's a lot of really interesting components. Technology is a nice thing to have. I come from a family of educators. My mom, decades ago, did amazing personalized learning without one iota of technology. So it is not required, but I think it's an amazing tool that we have, that we want to really optimize, and that was one of the things when I was a parent talking, that really pushed using technology well to get that personalized learning done.
Thank you. Ms. Doughty?
Personalized learning is, I agree with Gaetan, it's a fabulous way for our children to learn, because every student does have his or her own pace and his or her own style. And the teachers being able to take that information as they get to know the students to design tasks, not necessarily curriculum, but tasks and projects for them so that they can learn and feel positive about the learning experience, is extremely important, because then it creates a love of learning. We've also created a lot of challenges in terms of effort for our teachers to be able to do that, and I think we should be applauding the effort they're putting into this process, because if you have 25 kids in a classroom with 25 different learning styles, and you're adapting to each and every one of them, they really deserve a lot of credit for making this process work. Fortunately, the technology is great, because it allows them and gives them a tool to help that process, to individualize it. But we're also giving the teachers training in how to do that. So I think it's positive, and we want to keep it going, but we need to continue evaluating what elements the teachers need in order to help them do it, and we also need to get the data on the student achievement using this personalized learning.
Thank you very much. This question goes to Mr. Kelly first. What is your view of the role of digital learning and digital devices in the district? Address both screen time and efficacy. Yes. What is your view of the role of digital learning and digital devices in the district? Address both screen time and efficacy.
Well, I think I got your list of questions mixed up that were emailed me today. I think I might have answered this one already. Just kidding, got to get the questions in advance. But basically, the excitement of the digital opportunity or the learning opportunity through computers and through electronic devices is absolutely incredible. I mentioned that before. To imagine having the answers to anything you could possibly ask, any questions you might possibly have, any adventure you want to take, first you get to study it and find out about what it is, then you can take it. There's so much you could learn, but there are so many distractions and so much that we have to keep an eye on when it comes to using devices, for our kids to have the answer to every question, some of those questions we don't want them asking yet, some of those things we want to keep a mystery to them, some of the dark side of the internet we want to keep them away from. So it's a very, very concerning and exciting time for us to understand how that works. As far as experience that I have in life, I think that'll be a good way to sort of look at what kids do with the, involved in working with kids for years now, and actually having kids of my own to be able to make a decision, which could affect the entire town or the entire kids in the town and the school system. I think I could certainly help when it comes to making decisions on this topic.
Thank you. Ms. Kowalski, you're next.
I think the role of digital learning plays a huge role for our students, because we face a tough challenge of educating our children for the future for jobs that don't yet exist. And obviously, technology is clearly going to be a part of it. So I think that using technology and how we educate our children is essential. But I also think it's a very tough balance of how you use technology versus your, and where it comes into play. I think it provides great opportunities for a learning experience that we never had as children growing up. For example, having an art class that you're from, with another country, and being able to experience that. I think those unique aspects of digital learning are essential. I think that the difficulties that we're going to have to face and struggle with is the balance between the screen time and efficiency, and whether or not reading a book on the iPad versus reading a book with paper makes more sense in teaching them how to make notes in the margins. Those are questions we're going to have to ask. But overall, I think the digital learning component is important. It is essential for our children's future development and understanding how they're going to use those resources going forward. I think it also gives them unique educational opportunities in getting to know classrooms around the world and how they're using it.
Thank you. Ms. Francis?
Okay, so digital learning. I think it's got huge potential. I think we're starting to tap into that potential. I think it's got a big piece that it can help play in terms of master-based learning, getting to primary sources, so particularly, you know, in our high school, we see that, but it's amazing to see middle school and even elementary school students finding original work or finding things that are not processed by somebody else to help them learn, and that's something that we certainly gain from. Technology itself is something that's so big in our society. But on the other hand, I mean, never should it take over in terms of active learning. I'm also a big proponent of project-based learning, which I think can have so much benefit, and hands-on activities. You know, when it was first rolled out at Riverside, the big thing was they were going to show, you know, the butterfly lifecycle. I'm like, oh my goodness, what a horrible example, because those students were actually doing it with real butterflies before that, and isn't that so much better? So making sure we're not doing those things. I think the other piece, and as our representative of the board on the Curriculum Council, you know, one of the big things I kept pushing was, as, you know, we're, you know, having parents ask these questions about screen time, it's to really understand what are all of the concerns. As we go to hopefully start gathering this data, what are we, what are people concerned about, and how are we going to evaluate those things? I mean, it's everything from neck problems to, my personal favorite is blue light exposure and effect on sleep, you know, is the less engaging or addiction and overuse? So it's understanding all those concerns as we try to address this balance.
Thank you. Ms. Doughty?
The district has invested heavily in technology, but it's a relatively recent investment. So I think, you know, my kids are college and out. The digital devices didn't exist when they were in elementary school or middle school, and I think we don't fully have the data of what the cycle is, of how much time is appropriate. But more time is not necessarily bad time, if it's used constructively and productively. Technology has pervaded all of our lives in ways good and bad, and parents want to know they're doing the right thing. But I do think we need to seriously consider the data about what the technology impact is, particularly at the primary levels. Perhaps we need to be looking at, there are programs out to monitor usage and content so that we can see what the impact of those things are going forward. But we also have to be careful not to make a hasty decision. We don't want to say, okay, too much technology is bad, because we, again, back to trusting our teachers that they're using it well in their classrooms and giving them the tools to know what the balance, it's really about balance, as are many things in life, the balance between a playtime for the children in kindergarten, the butterflies, or sitting on a, looking at their iPads to produce a project related to it. So it's a different amount of time.
Thank you. Ms. Hirsch?
Well, as I said before, technology is certainly probably one of the biggest changes in education that we'll see in our lifetime. But with the introduction of technology in our classrooms, we've seen plenty of benefits. Students aren't having to lug around heavy textbooks anymore. You know, they don't have to worry about forgetting them at home, but the negative aspect of that is, I can no longer really see what my child is learning. It's all on a computer. So much like most parents, I want to be engaged in my child's education. I want to foster a love of learning. I want to be able to give them the opportunity to learn and take their lessons offline and at home. And I think it's definitely time for the district to look at a policy on screen time and digital wellness, because we really don't know how these will affect our children's health and education. Honestly, there are quite a few benefits, opportunities for students to be able to see art across the ocean. It's part of their curriculum that they wouldn't be able to see otherwise. But it certainly, like Gaetan said, shouldn't take away from hands-on learning. My first experience seeing it being in use was back to school night quite a few years ago, and they were talking about how wonderful it was that kids are going to be able to see water being able to be boiled on the computer, and I couldn't understand why they wouldn't be doing that in an actual science class. But ultimately, really, we've had these devices for enough time now that we do have the data to see if they are hitting the educational marks. It is high time for us to take a look to see if they're meeting the goals that we set for these devices, and if not, create proper goals to be able to utilize them in the ways that best need to be for our students' education.
Thank you very much. We are starting again. Ms. Kowalski? What issues do you believe the district needs to address in its academic program? What recommendations would you make? Issues the district needs to address, and what recommendations?
That's a loaded question. The issues I think that the district needs to address in this academic program, I think, are set out in its strategic plan that it has set out, that is currently operating under. I think we need to continue looking at those goals as we've set out, and as we've discussed here earlier tonight, determine which ones we're hitting the mark on, where we're falling short, and reassess how we, which priorities we want to put forward as we move on. My recommendations for our academic program, I think, are twofold, is one, to look at where we are spending our money, and two, making sure that we are spending effectively and efficiently. And what does that mean by spending effectively and efficiently? I think that is looking at where we are headed on a, where we are using our money wisely, whether it's with digital learning or giving additional support in the classroom with an extra teacher or an extra aide. I think we should look at those factors as well. And I think we need to make sure that with our academic program, we are working closely with our superintendent, so we are getting our understanding from her, as she's very close to the students. Give me one second. And I think that working with her and getting actively involved in the academic program, we can put forward a strong strategic plan, and we'll be making, we will be hitting those marks in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Francis?
That's a really broad question. So it leaves your head a little bit swimming, but, you know, the goals of the academic program should be for every student to succeed. And then you can break it down into, you know, what are the areas and what, you know, what does success mean? Obviously, math, science, English, you know, but also, you know, what are those students who may want to get certificates in technology or certificates in other skills? You know, how much do we do that? Do we send kids to write tech, which we started to do? So there's a whole broad range of what success means. And as a board member, I try not to actually make too many specific recommendations in terms of how to achieve the academic goals. As much as I am surrounded by teachers in my family, I am not a teacher. We have a superintendent, administrators, teachers, whose role it is to figure out how to make those things happen. So our role is really to say, okay, how do we evaluate success? What are we trying to reach for? How do we evaluate the efforts or the programs that we put in place to reach that success? So I think our role as a board is really primarily to work with the superintendent, to set the goals, to set the measurements of effectiveness of those goals and the programs that we have, and then to allow the specialists to then carry out those plans and to continue to support our students to reach their potential.
Thank you. Ms. Doughty?
And Ms. Gaetan, that's a very wide question. I think we have a series of program reviews that we are constantly evaluating, the curriculum, which is an important element of the academic program that the district puts forth, and to the benchmarks of whether students are achieving what they should be achieving. But I think there's a danger. The board is really supposed to be a policy governance body, and as Gaetan was pointing out, we have professional educators, we have a superintendent, and have staff in terms of getting into the real nuts and bolts of some of these academic issues, whereas the board is setting the standards for the curriculum and the achievement, but not really getting caught down into minutiae. And I think there's a danger in town that the board has looked to for answers for a lot of these different things, and we have to take a momentary step back and remember where the board's job is the overseer and the superintendent is the single employee in charge of the academic programs. And in this case, with the new superintendent, I think we would also look to her to come to us and say, these are the issues that we should be addressing, and then bring it, if to the extent she thinks it's appropriate in policy governance, to bring it to the board.
Thank you. Ms. Hirsch?
I'll echo the thoughts of my other candidates and say this is a very broad subject, some of which is not necessarily the purview of the board to make decisions on, except to ask the questions and direct the superintendent to take a deeper dive. But not all students walk through our school doors with the same talents and needs, and we have a legal, moral, and ethical responsibility to educate and support all of our students, no matter what their learning needs are. Every single one of our students have different talents and different learning needs. And quite literally, I think the issues to address the academic program are really focusing on how we can do that. Last year, the board revised their meetings to have retreats so they could take deeper dives into areas such as this. At the recent retreat, they did take a deep dive and focused on student achievement. And hearing their questions and concerns that they brought up really made me want to have a seat at that table to continue to ask the same types of questions that we're hearing tonight. But it is about figuring out if we have the right assessments so that we can put forward better academic progress for each one of our students, finding out where our students have gaps in their learning and mastery, and looking at the school improvement plans and supplemental funding that we, each school receives to make sure that they're targeting the right things for the right students. As I said, every single student has talents, and every single student has an area that they have a weakness, even if it's in the same program or course. We really do have to, I think that's the biggest issue that we need to address with our academic programs. Also, making sure that parents have access to the curriculum, so that they have, not the full in-depth curriculum, but at least the topic, so that they can support the learning at home.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you for the question. It is a little broad. As I sat here, thank you of my answer. I only came up with 90 seconds of word fluff. So basically, I'm going to say that I need to meet with the superintendent and talk to that superintendent about the plan. That person is our expert. That person is the person who's going to lead our school system. So I'm just going to say that a conversation with Harley-Gillian will yield the answer to that question to me.
All right. Next question, we'll go to Ms. Francis. Many special education parents are frustrated with the district's handling of their students' individual education plans. Do you think the special education system in the district needs... Do you think the special education system in the district needs to change? And if so, how would you change it?
So two things, I am not a special education expert. I think in the last question, we were, we were, I think, dividing the responsibilities in terms of board versus our specialists. That's not to say that I don't think the, the board takes a responsibility in, in trying to address concerns. I do think there's probably a lot of, and I know a lot of people who have good things to say about our special education program, that doesn't mean there's not room for improvement. I think, you know, one of the big things we've struggled with as the board is, you know, well, do we do another review? You know, how do we do this? Because we feel like we've done reviews and we feel like we've gotten information and reports and many pages, and yet we don't feel like we're moving forward. And so one of the things that I keep bringing up is, you know, when we do this the next time, we need to be really clear about what are our questions? What is it that we want answered? How do we make this something that's going to be really beneficial? One of the reasons I am happy that we have our new superintendent is that she's done work in, well, she has a special education background and she's done work in different districts in terms of really reshaping, working closely with parents and, and helping in this process. And so I, I think a lot of it is asking the right questions, getting the right information and supporting our superintendent and our, our executive branch in, in making the changes that they find are appropriate.
Thank you, Ms. Downey.
As I've been running, I've had conversations with various parents and at recent Board of Ed meetings. And there's been a lot of special education parents who've come forward with some stories that I think were really hard for a lot of people to hear because it was clearly very difficult for them. A substantial number of students in the district qualified for special education services with obviously a very wide variety of learning differences. So it's not a very, it's not a cookie cutter kind of approach. The most important thing is that every child should feel valued and is entitled to an appropriate education. But given what we're hearing from the community, and I think the community can be the pulse, not necessarily dispositive, but the pulse of what's going on. And I think it sounds to me, not having been on the board, that we do need to consider another special education review. Obviously, part of the budgeting process, though, that can't happen until the 2021 school year. But in the meantime, assuming the new board can put it into the budget consistent with budget constraints, that the superintendent can take a look, given her background, on if there's anything that's coming out to her as something we can fix on a short-term basis or quickly to address some of these concerns. But the out, the next review should be an outside entity, really objective, and, and listen to all the stakeholders, the students, staff and the parents.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch.
Well, I grew up with a mother who was a special education teacher and I happen to have two students with learning differences. So this is a topic that's close to my heart. As I said, not all students walk through the door with the same talents and needs and we must address the needs of every single student. Education has to meet the needs of the students ultimately. Effective boards always include regular reviews of their policies and programs and departments to ensure they're meeting the needs of our students and our staff. The reviews of the special education department in the past have occurred, and I know we've asked repeatedly to have another one done. But one of the things that it's always been missing from our past plans and program reviews is having an action plan tied to it. Ultimately, we need an independent review of the special education department and a plan to re-educate the staff, make sure that we don't create any unnecessary roadblocks when it comes to student success. We have to start the identification processes early in our schools. If we have pre-K programs and beyond, any of these types of programs that you can provide, support all students of all learning abilities. And ultimately, yes, it's also about professional learning and making sure that every single one of our educators has the tools that they need when they see a child struggling in a classroom for whatever that means, need may be. So that's sort of it.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Special education is very important and cannot be overlooked. Special education, unfortunately, in my personal opinion, will not be complimented. It'll always be criticized. There'll always be said that there's more we can do and we might be able to, maybe we can do more, maybe we can't, but the, in my opinion, that we're not going to get the people who are undergoing, or going through special education with their children, it's going to be hard for them to say things are good because they're afraid that we're going to take our, our foot off the gas and not maybe put more effort into it. It is crucially important that we give a lot of effort to special education and continue to attempt to improve special education. But we have to understand it's going to be hard to get a high score for special education, in my opinion.
All right, Ms. Kowalski. Sorry, I'm trying to keep the papers from flying.
I think there's one thing is for certain that special education is complicated. I think it's just as complicated, if not more complicated, in how to address the needs of those children that have unique learning styles as those that are, have, of our high achievers on the other end. I think we do need to take, as the incoming board, the incoming board does need to take another deep dive and we need to look and see where are we faulting our children and where can we improve? I think that, I agree with Joe, it is going to be constantly criticized, but I think we can make differences and we should look to see how we can make differences. I think having a superintendent who has a special education background, we should leverage her skills and talents to make sure that we are adequately providing the resources that we need to our children. We need to have an action plan. I couldn't agree with the other Karen Moore. There needs to be an action plan, substance and boxes that we need to check to make sure that we're hitting them on a regular basis. We need to make sure that our teachers that are providing our students with these unique learning challenges, the right tools and that we are not holding them back. And we need to talk to them to see what else is out there that we need to be providing them. We also need to make sure that there are no roadblocks. We need to eliminate the roadblocks for parents in getting those needs for their children. But I think most importantly.
Okay, well, finish please.
I will, just finish. I, I think most importantly that we need to assess the problem overall. We need to make sure that each child walks into and out of a school day feeling that they are special, that they are learning and that they are motivated. And this includes those in the special education department.
Our next question will go to Ms. Downey. The district has had five superintendents in the last five school years, as well as a significant turnover recently in cabinet positions. Will it be your responsibility to ensure stability in these roles, particularly the superintendent? And if so, what will you do to solve this problem? Could you just go it one more time? The district has had five superintendents in the last five school years, as well as significant turnover recently in cabinet positions. Will it be your responsibility to ensure stability in these roles, particularly the superintendent? And if so, what will you do to, to solve this problem?
I think everyone in this room knows we've had five superintendents in five years. Now that being said, some of them have been interim, so I don't know if they should necessarily count against us in quite the same way. The board, the only employee of the board is the superintendent. So to the extent there's turnover in these other positions, that is beyond the purview of the board. That's the superintendent's job, to manage his or her staff and her cabinet in whatever way she deems fit. In terms of the superintendent, I think what's important is that the board support the superintendent, but also not give her carte blanche. I think questioning respectfully and acting in a collaborative fashion is very important. I think everyone who serves on the board, really at the end of the day, I'm an optimist, has the best interests of the Greenwich Public Schools at heart. So there's a commonality among the eight people who are sitting on the board, but everyone comes to it from a different perspective. And as long as the interactions are respectful and positive and collaborative, I think we will hopefully put the superintendent issue behind us and I look forward to Dr. Jones being here for many years to come.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch.
I think it's pretty clear, we all know, this isn't an easy community to work in. We have high expectations for our students and our staff. We want academic rigor and to set high bars for excellence. We only focus on areas that we seem to need improvement. We tend to also always overlook the things that we do amazingly well in this district. It's about changing our mindsets, honestly, the way we view things, which is why we really should be focusing on retention and not turnover. It means hiring the right people, which I really think that we, we have been doing. Dr. Jones is fantastic. It's an area that we really, as I said, is to, is develop the talent that we have in our district already. We need to provide the support to our staff so that they feel valued and they want to stay. We have to make sure that we develop the talent, the deep talent that's here as well and our top performing teachers and help them plan for their career progression so that we can retain the talent that we do have. That being said, as Christina said, it's board governance. The super must be accountable to the board and they are objective. So it's a matter of working together to support the superintendent. But ultimately, there's something to be said for having you and different ideas and perspectives. And when we can bring incredible achievement and focus on the wonderful things that are happening in our district, we have happier students, happier staff and better satisfaction. Happy students and parents equal happy educators, which equals happy, you know, staff retention, I should say, and an overall positive view of our superintendent will want to stay.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Wow, I don't think I could have said that any better. That's exactly what I was thinking. You must have pulled that out, exactly, great minds. If a C, if a corporation had five CEOs in five years, I don't think the stock price would be doing very well. We're struggling to keep a CEO superintendent. Why is that the case? Well, Board of Ed has one employee. The Board of Ed picks the superintendent. The Board of Ed picks the superintendent, then all of a sudden, that superintendent's leaving. Something's wrong either in the selection process or in the retention process. We have, what I understand and what I believe is a good superintendent. So now we, as Board of Ed members, will have to make sure that that person is given, that superintendent's giving every tool possible for her to do her job. And that's what we have to make sure we do. Plus also, make sure if she's not doing her job, we identify that. And even if it's a tough decision to make, we still have to make that decision. But basically, we do have to support, our role will be to make sure the superintendent can get the job done.
Thank you, Ms. Kowalski. Once you get the microphone.
Rather than look at this as we've had five superintendents in five years, I think we should look at it as we have one superintendent for the future. And that's where we're starting now. I think we have to let go of the past to put the past behind us, but we should learn from the past and understand what we can take away from that in order that, one, we have one superintendent going forward. I think the board as a, needs to provide its challenge, its support and collaboration so that the, we can empower the superintendent to provide, to have the resources that she needs in order to build her, to build her, her board and her committee of her administration in order to advance the, the goals and the strategic plan for Greenwich. I, I think, I agree, we have high expectations here and I think what we as a board need to do for, for, for Dr. Jones is provide our full support going forward, learn from the mistakes that have been done in the past and push forward to building upon having one superintendent for Greenwich. And that's Dr. Jones. I fully support her. I intend to challenge her and I prevent, and I intend to collaborate with her as we move forward as a community.
Thank you, Ms. Francis.
So I think, you know, one of the things that we've worked on quite a bit and I've, I've tried to work on is sort of working, creating the board sort of as a unit for us to speak in terms of what are our goals as a unit? What are the measures for those goals as a unit? I think that work this year in terms of our strategic plan is going to be critical. I think we've talked about trying to restructure our meetings somewhat to try and get to the points that are really important so that we can really work as a unit in creating those goals. And so I think that's, that's a big piece that we can, we can work on. I agree that it's not directly our role to look at the stability in terms of administrators and, and, you know, maybe we can try and look at the, you know, the half, the, the glass full in terms of giving our superintendent the opportunity to hire people that she's really comfortable working with. So maybe that will have a little bit of a positive. But I think the one way that the adminis, that the Board of Education can help, both in terms of the superintendent and the administrators, is to try and also look at not only our functioning in, within ourselves, but also to look at how we, and I've said this before, but how we interact with other town bodies. One of the things that was a real surprise to me when I came on the board is how much time the superintendent and our administrators spend with everybody else. I think people really think like, oh, the board is sort of a big interaction and it is only a very small piece of what takes the superintendent and the administrators time. So that's a big piece, I think, in terms of our efficiency and our communication is really important.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Hirsch. How will you ensure transparency and communication between the district and the families of students, focusing on curriculum information and assessment data needed to help parents support their student?
Well, my background is in communications, so I guess, I guess I am lucky in that department. I think one of the main things that I've always spoken about, I've said we need to do a better job of, is communicating, communicating with stakeholders, sharing information and discussions and decisions that are made by the board and being proactive in that way and not letting others tell that story. I think the most important thing and one of the things that parents, like myself, have been asking for, for a very long time, is having a curriculum app that's available to them. And we've been talking about student data portals for quite some time so that we could see our students' data. And we keep hearing back and forth from the district as to why we can't access that. It's a problem. It's a problem that the board has certainly been aware of. I know it, again, at their most recent retreat, it was a big discussion topic as to, are we using the right tools to be able to give parents access? Are we communicating properly with people inside of our schools as well as exterior, the exterior stakeholders? I think one of the biggest things that has changed this year is Dr. Jones is sending out weekly emails, which has been absolutely fantastic, and sharing positive news stories as well as other things that are happening in our schools. It helps to create a better community for our schools and our town overall to do that. But ultimately, again, communication comes also from our teachers and our teachers have had a better opportunity to share information back and forth with parents. I think it's something that we need to support by helping them create a data warehouse to share curriculum with parents as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Well, as a parent of a high school student, we are getting a bunch of emails, we have access to their grades, we have access to the teachers, we meet with the teachers in open house, they give us their address, their email address, they tell us to communicate if we have any questions. The teachers, to us anyway, in our experience with the school is we do have access to them. I think there's a responsibility at the parent end to take advantage of that access to create the communication. There's a lot of different things going on as far as communication, taking the first student that I had go through the school system who's 28 years old now and where my high school, a freshman is now, and things are certainly advancing in a positive way. As far as communication personally, serving on the Board of Ed, I think that's one of the features that, one of the assets I can give to the Board of Ed is the fact that I'm around town, I'm visible, I'm approachable. I talk a lot, I communicate with people a lot, I know a lot of people. And I think specifically what I can offer is a degree of communication from the Board of Ed.
Thank you, Ms. Kowalski. Yes. How will you ensure transparency and communication between the district and the families of students, focusing on curriculum information and assessment data needed to help parents support their students?
So I think the, the communication has to come from three different levels. It needs to come from the board itself, it needs to come from the superintendent and it needs to come from the classroom. From the board, I think the transparency should come from what are our, what is our strategic plan? What do we intend to achieve? How are we intending to achieve it? And did we meet our goals? That needs to come directly from the board, and we need to offer those materials to the community. From the superintendent, I think the superintendent needs to continue to send emails and enhance communication as to the assessments that the students are undertaking on a regular basis, how we view those assessments, and communicating on what the value of those assessments is. Our children are tested on a regular basis, but I myself personally don't know how to compare those assessments. And I think we need to have a better roadmap of how we are to look at those assessments, how they compare, and how we can take that assessment as a parent and help our children. Communication then needs to be coming from the teachers themselves. What are our children learning on a regular basis? How can we support them at home? And how can we reinforce what's happening in the classroom in the home so that we are working together as a community in advancing the education of our children? And I think if you can master communication from those three different levels, you will increase the transparency of our education system.
Thank you. Ms. Francis.
So I don't think transparency so much is an issue in my mind. I think there's a fair amount of transparency with regards to, you know, what's happening with students in terms of their assessments. I think even curriculum is there to some extent, although I think that's getting better, and I'll touch on that. I think really the bigger piece is making that information usable, useful, and what's the next step after getting that information? I am really pleased to say that the superintendent, and I'm racking my brain trying to remember exactly what that tab says, but there's a new tab on the district website that's basically like a parent link or a parent support or a parent information page. And I spent a lot of time going through that and looking at the different pieces. And there's, you know, the K through five math and science curriculum is on there now in terms of the basic goals, which I think is really great, in a really easy-to-get place. There's also some information on sort of some of the tools that parents can use. And as part of the Curriculum Council, we talked a lot about that, actually, whatever, I think it was two days ago, in terms of how to make that really usable, friendly, and that good. So I think that's really the biggest piece to me is how do you make the information you're giving usable? How do you make sure people are getting it? Because so often, we have meetings, we have presentations, and there's nobody there. So how do we get that information out in a way that's usable? And I think as we talked about, the student profiles being a big piece of that as well, it should be something that's usable.
Thank you. Ms. Downey.
The beauty of the technology is, I think, communication is much better than it has been because people don't have to wait for things to come in the mail. They're getting an instant email with information from the district. They're able to log on to Schoology and Aspen and get information. However, at the same time, there is an abundance of information. And I think, as Gaetan alluded to, we need to make sure that the information we're giving to parents is specific and understandable and attached to the learning. People, you know, you can peruse the district website for hours on end and not really find out easily, well, what's my kid studying on this topic on this week? So I think we need to focus the communication on those kind of specifics between the schools and home. I think that should be a priority. From a district level, I do think the district does a good job of communicating. I think Dr. Jones's weekly newsletter is great. There's always been kind of general information, and then that's what the website can provide supplemental information.
Thank you very much. Next question goes to Mr. Kelly. The Board of Education has received a recommendation to spend $750 million to modernize the schools. What is your view of the priorities in this plan? And how would you convince taxpayers that this money is necessary to further achievement?
That's a great question. I'll start with, we are Greenwich, Connecticut. And as Greenwich, we need the best facilities. We need the best schools, best fields, the best stadiums. We need all the best because we are the best. The state looks at us. As a coach, we go from stadium to stadium, field to field. And we see these beautiful stadiums. We see these beautiful fields, beautiful facilities. And people look at us, well, you're Greenwich, Connecticut. Yes, I guess we are. But we show up to these places, and I'm envious of their fields and their structures and their facilities. There's a disconnect here. There's something wrong. There's a lot we have to do in order to live up certainly to our reputation and certainly make our kids proud of the schools they're going to, the families proud they're moving to our community. I moved here by choice 22 years ago. Well, that's not actually true. It was my wife's choice to move here, but we moved here by choice. And Greenwich, Connecticut was this great place to move to. And we looked at the schools. They looked good. We kind of thought in our minds that we would go to, oh, maybe private schools, because that's what a lot of people do who move to town, but we fell in love with the public schools. The red sign's about to come up. But basically, we need to upgrade our stuff.
Thank you. Ms. Kowalski.
My understanding is that the town of Greenwich and the Board of Education conducted a study. They got a recommendation, but it's never actually approved the capital plan. It has calls for $750 million to modernize schools, and it notes a lot of things that need to be fixed in this town. I don't disagree with the things that need to be fixed, but I think the board as a whole needs to dive into that capital plan. It needs to have debate. It needs to have challenge and collaboration on how, on what are the priorities? And once it decides what those priorities are, it needs to communicate them to the community itself in order to get, let the community understand why these are the priorities that we need to undertake. I think in addition to all of the changes that were recommended in that particular plan, we need to look at private and public partnerships in order to achieve the goals that we need to achieve, particularly with the stadium at the high school. And I think we should look for those particular partnerships to help in making the changes that we need to do in order to sustain a proper educational foundation for our kids. And that includes the foundation the schools sit on.
Thank you. Ms. Francis.
So this may actually go back a little bit to our communication discussion because I do think the board set priorities. I do think the board came out and presented those things to the town. But, you know, this is a good turnout compared to what we had at most of those presentations. We often had six or seven people come out to listen to those presentations. The things we talked about are ADA accessibility. We have many schools that don't have that yet, and that's really way behind. We talked about safety. You know, I'm not particularly anxious about safety in our schools. I think our schools are a really safe place to be. But I do think our high school, for example, which is going to be most at risk if you look at statistically what happens across the country, doesn't have a safe entrance. That was high on our priority list was the safety issues. Clearly, enrollment is important to look at that in terms of what the predictions are. Always tricky to predict correctly, but, you know, you want to have enough space for the kids. And then I think, you know, in addition to that, you know, we're issues about new learning styles and what's important with that. So those are the priorities. And then with each step, you've got to figure out how you move forward with that. I think the trick comes with that next step because we as a board could vote all we want, but we don't actually get to make the decisions, right? We have RTM, we have BET, we have First Selectmen. We have a lot of other people that come into play with that. I think one of the things that was a good step in the right direction was the Blum Shapiro report. You know, the problem, and what I kept asking was, you know, this sort of talks about what you do once you've got the plan. But we need to start at ground zero. And that's, again, I think we're looking at efficiency within the town, looking at the processes within the town, and I'm running over slightly, sorry. But those are also really important pieces for the board to figure out how to maximize what we're doing moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. Downey.
The Master Facilities Plan is a very detailed 15-year capital plan. For each of our 15 schools are $1.5 million, $1.5 million square feet of real estate. It does set forth priorities, and the priorities are accessibility, safety, and educational specifications. That report is in great detail, and yes, people did not attend. But now the next step is, how do we get the work done? I've been a member of the RTM Education Committee, and we should have been on the front lines on this. And this is where I think some of the communication failed. During the budgeting process, the RTM and the BET look at each and every item on an annual basis. We're going to have a battle annually unless we really go out there. And I think this is where the board can really take a lead and try to work with the other town decision makers, the First Selectmen's Office, the BET, and the RTM, to collaborate and have a common goal on what everyone agrees. The priorities and the timeline should be going forward and how we're going to pay for them. Because otherwise, every year, there's going to be a budget battle in this room on Budget Night when the RTM is here and at the BET meeting. So I think the communication with the other decision makers and stakeholders in town should be a priority for the coming board year because we're going to be fighting this battle for years to come. And these buildings really need the work done after many years of deferred maintenance.
Thank you. Ms. Hirsch.
To be clear, I think Gaetan said it best, that the board did vote on specific priorities and goals, and they were definitely the correct ones. ADA accessibility is not a want, it is a need. We are woefully behind in making sure every single one of our school facilities is ADA compliant. They're used by more than just our students. They're used for voting and for town government meetings, amongst many other things, and student safety being paramount. So those were some of their top priorities. The BET and other town bodies who do control the funding for these sorts of projects did ask for a specific Master Facility Plan in order to plan out our budget. Yes, the number is large, but it is amortized and spread over, you know, over 15 years or longer at this point. But ultimately, yes, it's correct. Taxpayers, as we all are, we all see increases in our taxes. We don't always know what's happening and where that money is going. It's another area that communication really is key, is making sure we did have meetings for stakeholders to come out and hear what was going on with the Master Facility Plan, but we need to do more. Ultimately, we have to remember, we're also not talking just in dollars and cents. We're talking about investing in the educational future of our students. And the school facilities need to be reflective of the way they're learning and growing in today's society and going forward, making sure spaces are flexible. And I think that if we do more community meetings to educate the town, to understand why it's necessary to develop, focus on the infrastructure of our town, they'll be more apt to understand and be willing to support it.
Thank you very much. Now, we are now going once again to the beginning. Ms. Kowalski, a question comes to you. What will be your role as a Board of Education member in leveling the playing field for all schools and all students across the district? And what is the role of the PTA in that, if at all?
Can you just repeat the question and make sure I fully understand, please?
Sure.
Thanks.
What will your role be as Board of Education member in leveling the playing field for all schools and all students across the district? And what is the role of the PTA in that, if at all?
I think the role, I'm going to take the questions in order. I think the role of the PTA in each school plays a very important role. I think the PTAs, as I know them in at least two schools, I have children in two schools at the time, are instrumental in providing great communication as to what's happening in the schools and the resources that the schools are lacking and what they need. And I think that the PTA plays an important role in communicating those issues to the board as well as to the superintendent as to what the schools need and communicating how we, and we can have an ongoing communication as to how we can provide those resources. I think how we can level the playing field for all schools, I'm not sure that's the right question. I think the right question is how we look at each school and making sure that that school is addressing the needs of the children and teachers there. I don't necessarily think it's a leveling of the playing field because I think each school as a community school has its unique issues. And it's those issues that we need to address and make sure that, one, each of those schools is making the achievement levels for that school as well as making achievement goals for all of the community. But that's looking at each school on an individualized basis to making sure they have the resources that they need.
Thank you. Ms. Francis.
I'm glad I didn't have this question first because it's a little hard to know how to attack it. There's absolutely no doubt that PTAs play a critical role in so many things that happen in our schools and in supporting our schools. In terms of leveling the playing field, I'm assuming we're not talking achievement gap again because I feel like we kind of addressed that issue. But of course, you know, we talked about the importance of that. In terms of specifically, you know, things related to donations, into keeping things fair, I mean, we do have a cap on that so that we try to keep those kinds of things fair. In fact, we just talked about this at Curriculum Council. You know, PTAs who want to buy specific apps for a specific school, you know, at what point do you sort of feel like we have to be careful about that because we do need to keep things even and we have to not, you know, have too much preference in one area over another? So I think that's something that we look at on a regular basis. But I honestly think it's not nearly as important as making sure we're supporting all of our students to the best of our abilities. So I think that's much more critical. And I'm going to take the rest of the time to answer a couple of other things. And special ed, I want to go back for a second. I have a big circle around. We do have a report coming from UConn, which we're looking forward to, which I think is, while we may not be able to budget for a full review until later, I think that's going to be a really important thing for the new board to look at and to help us as we frame those questions. I agree totally about our fields and our facilities. I have a baseball player, and it's crazy to see what we get around town.
Thank you.
I thought you were going to ask about playing fields when you said leveled the playing field. It's a start, to be honest, I got to say. I was like, okay, there's the field question.
I think there are playing fields in the future.
It's coming. I think the roles of the PTAs, I was a PTA president, and I know this was an issue years ago about some PTAs can raise more than others. And I think the gift cap is an appropriate way for the board to manage that you don't turn into the schools where every bell and whistle, because a PTA can afford it. So I don't think, I think the PTAs are given guidance, and I believe it works. The system has been in place for quite some time. And in terms of leveling, the board leveling the playing field, I think the board really looks at, is every school getting what it needs from a budgetary and staffing standpoint? And that's the role of the board, to be sure what the schools need and what the superintendent is proposing, and make sure it's educationally appropriate to, and within the bounds of, I guess, this would be the old equity versus equality discussion. But I think the board's role is to really focus on giving the schools the money and the tools that they need as appropriate to get the educational outcomes we're looking for for the students.
Thank you. Ms. Hirsch.
I think, I'll go back to the other Karen said it best. It's not necessarily, the term leveling the playing field is kind of the wrong way to look at it. And I'll start also with PTAs. As a PTA president, it was something that we constantly looked at. How do we support what's going on in our schools and areas that, to make it more accessible to our students? PTAs are critical on this and not just fundraising to help provide the schools with things that they want to be able to have access to sooner if we're not on the top of the list for repairs and things like that in the school district. But it's also finding, funding to support assemblies and extracurricular activities to make our students engaged and involved, members of the community, and bringing parents in to be involved as well. That's probably the biggest way to level a playing field is create a community. Each one of our schools is a smaller community within a larger community of Greenwich. But ultimately, if you want to look at the way the board should be leveling the playing field, again, it's about governance. It's about looking at the strategic, excuse me, the SIP plans for each school. The board was just looking at it and deciding, you know, who makes the decisions? Who oversees these school improvement plans? And the supplemental funding programs that we have in the district for each school need to be able to support those SIP plans. To look at the areas that each school needs to bring their educational levels up. And that strategic, excuse me, the supplemental funding is the way to do that. I think that's where the board's role in leveling the playing field per se would come, is to making sure that we are looking at those plans and making sure that we're providing the proper funding for each school to hit their targets.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly.
I had no answer to that question. And as I thought more and more about it, the only answer I had, Karen Kowalski in the hot seat certainly hit the answer straight on. And Karen Hirsch also reiterated the fact that it basically, it's not about an even playing field. It's about getting these schools what they need to perform in the way they need to perform. So since this is plagiarized answer, I'm not going to continue to talk anymore.
Thank you very much. We'll go to the next question, and then one will go to Ms. Francis.
Glad I could be out there.
Based on the recent Greenwich Public School budgets, specifically the difference between what the superintendent has proposed and what the BOE, BET, and RTM have passed, how will you advocate for the needs of Greenwich Public School students to ensure the district has the resources it needs?
So, you know, being on the board, and I think someone said this earlier, I absolutely believe that every member of the board is there for the right reasons, which is the success of our students. And, you know, I suspect all of us would love to just spend forever to support our students. But I think we realistically understand that we also are part of this town, we're citizens in this town. And, you know, you go to a lot of these meetings, and there are a lot of things that are important. Our schools are certainly a huge part of the budget, but, you know, it's our, you know, fire and police, it's, you know, supporting the elderly, it's social services. There are so many things that we want to do and that we should do well in Greenwich. And so there isn't an infinite amount of money. So I think it's really trying to find that balance of supporting the superintendent, supporting the needs of the students, and advocating for that at budget time, explaining the importance of various requests. But it's also being realistic in terms of, you know, feedback to the superintendent and to our administrators and, you know, to our teachers to say, you know, these are great ideas, but we have to find the balance. And again, I was in Curriculum Council a couple days ago, and they're like, wow, these teachers would really love this expensive app. And I said, that's great, and it sounds great, but do they say what they might be able to give up for that? Right? There does need to be some give and take. And it's not always that that need to give something up, but I think it does need to be part of our thinking that we need to find that balance.
Thank you, Ms. Downing.
I think for the most part, the board wants to support all of the things that the superintendent asks for in her budget. That, I think, in a wish list perfect world, that would be the way it works. However, that's not the world and the way it works. The BET gives the budget guidelines of whatever percentage they're going to give on an annual basis. And the board has done a really good job the last few years of being respectful and not overstepping what the BET is saying. This is what the town is willing to accept on a cost containment basis. But we also have very limited room to work with because 80% of the Board of Ed budget is salaries and contractual issues like transportation. So the amount of money that the board and the superintendent have to work with when working with these BET guidelines is a very small amount of money. And yes, it's important money, but relative to the rest of the budget, it is a small amount of money. Part of this is, back to my point earlier, of educating the BET and the RTM of what the needs of the district are, and that maybe we can go above the 2% or 2.5% or whatever the number is that the BET sets in order to meet the educational needs. Superintendent Mayo last year was very clear with those entities, and I sat in the RTM education meetings and sat in the budget meetings. And people, there's a lot of people in town who just want to draw a very firm line. So I think it's about balance and communication if we want to achieve further expenditures.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch.
We certainly want to meet the high expectations of the community and build in the tradition of excellence here. The reason we moved here, my husband is a proud graduate of the high school and wanted our children to have access to the same education that he had. And it's built on what our budget is. I really would like to see a budget that's built on a list of educational priorities that supports the needs of our schools, our students, and our teachers. And the board, to be fair, does a really good job of advocating for the needs of our funds. They go to every single BET meeting, they go to the RTM meetings, they ask the PTAs, and the PTA step forward and go to those meetings as well to advocate. So I don't think it's necessarily about the proper advocacy. The public has a perception that the school district has vast resources available to them, like Christina said. And it may seem like our education budget is large. It certainly sounds that way when you hear the numbers. But we don't have a huge budget of available, excuse me, discretionary funds available to us. As Christina said, a lot of those go towards things like teacher contracts, busing, and things like that. So it's about looking to find ways to use those limited discretionary funds to focus on the objective and decisions and the needs of the entire district. We have to focus, we focus too much on the return on investment, and we lose sight of the bigger picture that we have 9,000 students and the parents that live with them. It represents a large segment of the 60,000 people we have in this community. Investing in our schools and our students benefits the town as a whole. And I think it is a matter of going out and making sure that people understand what it is that we need and why we need it, instead of just focusing on the bottom line.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Nobody told me what superpowers I get when I get on the Board of Ed. So I'm still trying to find out what those are. But I'm guessing, to answer the question you asked, in the time I spent working at the school as a coach, I wanted more uniforms, I wanted more socks, I wanted more shorts, I wanted more equipment. I would ask the athletic director, you know, we need this, why can't we have it? And I'd get the explanation why we couldn't get certain things, and I'd have to prioritize what I had to get and what I couldn't get. We'd discuss it and figure it out, and we'd end up with some of the things we needed and some of the things we didn't, some of the things we wanted but couldn't get. I assume, once we get to looking into all the different things that different schools need and the different groups need, the different aspects of what goes on in the districts, the district we need, it's going to be about identifying what's important. Fiscal responsibility is important to me, it always has been. And it's important to understand that there are some things we're going to need and fight for, and some things we're going to kind of fight for a little bit, but we just have to decide what the important things are. We've got to pick our fights.
Okay, Ms. Kowalski. We're getting to the end.
So I think we have, I think the school district has the right level of spending. I think we have a sufficient, a sufficient amount of resources. I think the key focus is spending effectively and efficiently. And I think this is where communication comes back, that we've talked so much about here tonight, is having that communication with the superintendent and the schools, the PTAs, understanding what are the needs of the schools. And as a board, coming together to prioritize, how are we going to spend that money effectively to provide the resources for our students? And I think that that is, needs to be in a constant checks and balances and looking at it on either a quarterly or a half yearly basis to see where we're spending our money and how we've allocated it, and is it being put to good use and is it working effectively for us? And I think those are things that the board needs to consider as we try to balance a budget and look to make sure that the taxpayers' money is spent wisely. And again, that comes from understanding what resources we need, prioritizing them, and reevaluating them as we go forward to making sure that we're hitting those targets and how we're spending our money.
Thank you. Now, this question goes to Ms. Downing. Less than one-third of ALP math students are girls. How can the Board of Education and the district ensure we are preparing all students at all levels, including girls, for higher learning STEM success?
Could you just, one more time? It was a long question.
Yes. Less than one-third of the ALP math students are girls. How can the Board of Education and the district ensure we are preparing all students at all levels, including girls, for higher learning STEM success?
My daughter was in ALP math, and she was the only girl in elementary school, so I don't think it's the role of the board to necessarily do it. I think we, again, back to personalized learning, we want to encourage our staff to use those tools they have. Again, it's about all student achievement at all levels. And we can't really place artificial standards on X number of girls in a class or X number of boys in a class. I think the whole idea is to really push for student achievement on all levels for all students. The board will give the district the tools to do so, but I'm not, I think that's kind of going back to, it's above our outside of policy governance of what the board should be doing, other than within the bigger confines of the curriculum.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hirsch.
Well, much like Christina said, I think it is sort of outside of the purview of the board to, you know, to sort of direct curriculum in that manner and other ways. But ultimately, it is really about the board's responsibility to ask the right questions, is to seeing, are these the right tools? Are we using data properly to guide instruction? Are we using the data that we have on our students and assessments to make sure that they're being placed in the right courses? Are we utilizing the technology that we have, the other types of educational supports, to make sure that every student is getting what they need, whether they are in advanced classes or not? My daughter was consistently shut out of ALP math and at the highest level of learning. And so the teachers went out of their way to find ways to give her what she needed within her classroom, extra work and extra support, so that she could hit the higher target. So it's not necessarily just about having the students in the advanced classes. It's about making sure that our educators in our classes have the tools to give students what they need, no matter what level of learning that they're at. But again, ultimately, it does really come down to making sure that we are using the right assessments. If, you know, if we're missing the mark and we're not hitting national levels to have our students in different levels of courses, the question then becomes is, are we, you know, are we using things to place them in the right way?
All right, Mr. Kelly.
I didn't know such an imbalance existed. One of the qualities I have is that if I do not have the answer to a question, I am not afraid to say I do not know that answer. What I would do is have a discussion with the expert we have recently hired, Toni Jones, to decide her opinion on such a matter and how to address it. So I have nothing to say with my question, but it's a good question. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Kowalski.
So I have three girls. And obviously, I think, I look at, and oftentimes, I find myself as being the only female in a boardroom. So I know, I do think that there is a way to, that we should find to encourage young girls and young women to pursue the math and the sciences. But I do think it is outside the purview of the board to effectively do that. But what we can do as a board, I think, is providing the right tools, resources, and assessments to our educators who are with our children on a regular, on a daily basis, finding those children, whether they're male or female, that are excelling in one area versus another, and giving them the tools to promote them and encourage them and move them in the right, in that direction. Because I do think the math and sciences is going to be a way of the future. So I don't think it's the board's purview, but I do think we can provide the tools. And I don't think it's male or female, I think it's providing the resources. And if that child is showing an fluency to the math and sciences, give them the tools and encouragement to go forward. Because I think that that is only going to be, that is the responsibility of the educators, and if we can give them those, those resources, then we've done our job.
Thank you, Ms. Francis.
So as a female with an engineering degree, I can remember being the only, well, I can remember the day sitting in my section of 30 students and realizing the other girl wasn't there. So I've experienced that, but it's something I really tend not to focus on specifically, and maybe I should more. But I think the bigger question is, is there bias? Is there something that we're doing, whether it's looking at girls in math, boys in language arts, our high need students not making it into, into our ALP program and not being identified because of inherent differences that potentially might exist there? And so do we have biases that are influencing how we're assessing people? And how do we change those biases? And also, do we have biases in how we teach? Now, having two boys, you know, when my kids were little, I started reading about, you know, how do boys learn better? Right? And there is literature out there. And so I think it's trying to look at every group and understand how to improve their experience, both through the assessment process and through the learning process. And so I think that's something that while we can't get into the nitty gritty, I think it's not an unreasonable question for us to ask the superintendent, to have them make sure that they feel that they're optimizing those components of the student's experience. Again, so every student is really being challenged and learning in the best environment for them.
Thank you. Well, we're coming to the last question because we won't have time to ask two. So the final question, and we'll go to Ms. Hirsch first. Is there a question we should have asked but didn't? What is that question? And what is your response?
Well, I have to be honest, there are quite a few questions I was surprised to not be asked this evening.
We didn't get to the field.
Well, one of them is fields, and I will say, I certainly think we need more fields in town, and they need to be safe and they need to be, you know, properly maintained for all of our students. I was surprised that we weren't asked about food, because I know that's a big topic, making sure that our students have access to the best quality of nutrition that we can provide them, giving them the foods that they want to eat. A hungry student is not a student that's available for learning. I also have to say, you know, out of all the questions that we asked is, you know, what makes, what makes you want to do this? I feel like I've been advocating for the needs of parents and students in this district for over 10 years. And every time we finally get to a point where I'm just at that, I feel like we're just at that finish line, that finish line moves forward. And so to me, part of the reason I stepped forward to run for the Board of Education is to be able to continue the opportunity to ask the right questions, to make sure that we think of every side of a discussion before we make a decision of the board, and making sure that the community is participatory and engaged in these processes, having a back and forth discussion and taking stakeholder input. I find it's very interesting, as not being involved this year in council as a, as a regular parent, I would say, I'm not getting the information from the schools the same way I was. I feel like I'm missing the opportunity to find out what's going on in the classrooms. And I'm realizing that it's really important. I know what comes home with my students at the end of the day, but not every parent is attuned to digging through backpacks. So it really is important. It's part of the reason I've decided that I want to step forward and continue to advocate and ask the right questions.
Okay, Mr. Kelly. What didn't we forget, what did we forget to ask?
Same question. Is that what you were asking?
Yeah.
I'm stealing one of Karen's answers. Basically, what I thought would be a good question to ask is why we're doing what we're doing, why we're volunteering to go on the Board of Ed. Now, I know that most of the people I talk to about the Board of Ed, unfortunately, Gaetan, sorry, were critical. And seems like it's a hot rod, it's a lightning rod for criticism serving on the Board of Ed. Lucky for me, I've got thick skin and am able to do that. A 25-year Wall Street career gives me the ability to not be worried about people criticizing me, but also keep an ear open to what their criticisms are. It's a hard job. What I did with the school system, and I've been a volunteer now since I've moved to town, and I've been a volunteer fireman, I've been a volunteer coach, I volunteered in neighborhood associations, I've served on sports boards, on neighborhood boards, just to sort of help the community. Working as a coach, I felt it was so exciting and so thrilling to work with the kids in our town, that you guys entrusted me to work with your kids, and most of you guys came back and told me there was a positive result. That thrilled me. Board of Ed is a step up. I don't mind a lightning rod position. I really, really will put the kids' well-being first, and I'm excited about that, don't care what people say. But number one, I am making sure the kids' well-being is first. And that's easy when you use that as the common denominator when making your decisions, how to serve on the Board of Ed, I think. I've never served on the Board of Ed. Am I done? Red?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Kowalski.
Sure. So I think we could probably have an open conversation all night long, and I'm sure there are several of you in the audience that say, well, I have a question and I'd like to know the answer. And I'm happy to talk to anyone afterwards if you have questions. I think there are important issues that the board needs to look at, fields, food, social and emotional learning. But also, I think, one of the reasons why I wanted to run for the board is, as a member of the community, I wanted to feel more involved with the Board of Education in helping shape the education of my own kids. And I wanted to do something. I wanted to make a difference. And I felt that being sitting on this board, I could help not only And I felt that being sitting on this board, I could help not only shape my own kid's future, but help the town of Greenwich as a whole look forward to a bright and shining future for all of them. I want to make sure, as a board member, that I provide every kid in this town equal access and fair access to all of the resources and tools they need to achieve their fullest potential and reach the highest successes that they can. If every kid out of Greenwich High School goes to college, wherever it is, it's a success story. If a kid who did poorly on their first assessment in, at the beginning, and now gets it at the end, and hits his marks at the end of the year, that's a success story. And I want to sit here on the board and promote more success stories.
Thank you very much, Ms. Francis.
So I was trying not to completely cheat and use the same list, so I think I came up with one, which was school safety, and happy to say that we're actually working on that policy now, and that there's been a lot of work, I think, with the superintendent, meeting with parents about school safety. So that was one that didn't come up. Fields, there's no doubt, I wasn't sure if I thought anybody would ask about lighting, but that's always a really hot topic. And, you know, it's getting, it's getting the balance, I think, between the community and community needs and desires, and optimizing experiences for our students, and I think fields in general. Food, you know, is a big one, and I think, you know, sort of being friendly to our environment is an important balance as well with that. But I think sort of the good one is, you know, why, why do you want to be on the board? And I'll pass on my husband's line, which is, if you win, we'll celebrate, but if you lose, we'll have a big party. And so, you know, the question of why do you do it? My youngest is going to graduate soon, but as I've said, I come from a family of educators. Yeah, I think it's in my blood. I think learning is done well is so exciting. I really loved, you know, that Dr. Jones, when she was interviewing, was talking about the joy of learning. I so, you know, enjoy trying to be a part of making, you know, the success of our students a high priority, and to try and find ways for that to be a joyful success. And so that's why I'm here, to support our superintendent and to ever try to achieve that goal.
Thank you, Ms. Downey.
So I get the last word, huh?
Yes, you do.
My husband would disagree. But like Karen, my first thought was, there are a lot of issues to talk about, but there's always going to be issues to talk about, but it is about why do each of us want to be on the board? 26 years ago, my husband and I moved out of the city to Greenwich. How did we pick Greenwich? Because of, among the most significant reasons were the great public schools. It was a driving force in our decision. All three of my children born here, K through 12, the Greenwich Public Schools provided an excellent education to my children and prepared them for college and their careers. I want that for all children in this town, and it's important to our town, to our viability and energy in the town. So in my life on the RTM, which is an experience I can bring to the board, I think I really have a good understanding of the town processes and can bring those to the Board of Ed. And being on the RTM's been great, but I want to have a more significant impact in this community, a community that I love, that hopefully I'll live in for a long time, and also to give back to the Greenwich schools, which were so good to my family. I think this allows me to bring my education and my experiences in a positive way and objectivity.
Thank you very much. This concludes the evening. Thank you, candidates. Thank you, timers. Thank you, audience. Don't forget to vote November 5.